I guess it's my turn now. Okay. So I'm Addison Kenny and that's Emma Myers. I'll be the moderator and she'll be the timer. Thank you all for coming again. So in seat one, we have Sean Bennett. And seat two, we have Michael Acourt. And seat three, we have Darren White. And seat four, we have Leanne Gagian. And we're just gonna try to keep the time moving as quickly as we can. So to start, each candidate will be asked to give a brief introduction about themselves of no more than three minutes. And then she will draw me a question and we will ask randomly. The first question will be asked to the candidate in seat one. And the moderator, moving toward the right, down to the next questions. Please limit your answer to three minutes. Do two or three rounds as the time will allow. At the end, each candidate will get a chance to have a closing statement, which may include an answer to any question that was asked previously to another candidate. Please limit your closing statement to three minutes. And we will draw names randomly for that as well. You can... So you'll draw a seat number. Seat four. So, seat four, please provide a brief background about yourself for no more than three minutes, including why you are running and what your special strengths you believe you would bring to the school board. So, Leanne Gagian.
Oh, that's me. Alright. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the WEA and everyone involved this evening for the forum. And thank you for my fellow running mates here for being here tonight too. My name is Leanne Gagian. And a brief history, I'm from a small town south of Westville. South town, please don't hold that against me. And I can talk about myself a little bit, but I'm gonna talk about my three best accomplishments right now. And those would be my three children. All three graduated from Westville School Districts. My oldest daughter, Kendra, is working for CCMSI as a graphic designer in their marketing department. She also owns her own business and has a two-year-old daughter that she tries to juggle on, so all that. My twins graduated recently from college. And Morgan is working at Southern Indiana as a gra...uh, graphic designer, no, sorry about that. As a athletic trainer, which she wanted to do since she was in the state. She's working for Eastern Green High School. Jacob started a new job working for the NCSA, which is the National Center for Supercomputing Applications in Urbana. It's part of the U of I. And he is a cybersecurity engineer. These are the examples of success stories of Westville School District. Personally, I've been involved in many community activities for children, that include children, which is the Westville Ref League, Lions Club, Sanus Anonymous. And recently, I've been assisted in the Westville Park Committee and have volunteered many years for the ticket booth of the WHS High School football games. I, along with the entire board, are working hard to get school back to normal, or the new normal. And for the future, I would like to be able to finish what I started for the Westville School District. Thank you.
Seat number one. So Sean Bennett, you can introduce yourselves now.
Alright, thank you. My name is Sean Bennett. I've been married to my wife Jonah for forty-five years. We raised three children, two of them are adopted, I don't remember which two, but a couple of them are adopted. And they've been well-served by the Westville Schools. I've been fortunate enough to have served on the board for a little over thirty-two years now. I've been a past board president several times. Jonah and I are both active in Grecreak Baptist Church. Actually, I'm quarantining right now, that's why I'm a little different on the screen, for a upcoming knee surgery replacement that I have. But Jonah went to church last night and she was asking at the end of the...after church, why after all this time, I still want to be on the board? And her answer that she told me she gave was that, well, that's where his heart is and he's good at it. Well, I think she might be a little biased, but I'd like to take the opportunity to explain the why of why I still want to serve. I find it somewhat humbling that I've been blessed to serve for as long as I have, because initially, I really had no connection to the Westville Schools other than, of course, I went there and we had made the decision as a couple that we wanted our children to go to Westville long before they were even born. Having said that, I have enjoyed the support and encouragement from many in the district. I am enormously proud of the position that Westville has in our, in Vermaen County at this time. If you can ask any realtor, ask Dave Barney. The demand for housing in Westville is great. And I think the schools have played a part in that, and I'm proud of that. I believe our students will be some of the best disciplined students in the county. I was very active on the teams that established the discipline procedures and due processes. We've got subs that only want a sub in Westville, and I think that speaks very highly of Westville. Early on in my tenure, Westville was in a place where they actually had to borrow money for operating expenses. Again, that wasn't our fault, it was the state defaulting on some of the issues that they had for us. But we were left to clean that up. Through good stewardship of multiple boards that I've been a part of and administrations partnering with labor, we're now in a position to make decisions based on financial strength. I've seen a lot in thirty-two years, but absolutely nothing compares to the COVID issues that we're facing right now. I believe I have a good, gained a unique perspective that mostly comes from experience that will help us overcome the challenges of the COVID and get back to a normal school year. Finally, I'm a little protective, I guess. I've helped fight a lot of the battles that have allowed Westville to come, as far as they have. Admittedly, things are fragile, and I'd like to continue to do that. I desire to continue to be part of the team that has no agenda other than the very best for Westville students, staff, and community. I firmly believe that if you want to predict future behavior, you look at past accomplishments. That's what I tried to do with my career. I hope you look at my, our part of the accomplishment you give us.
It has been three minutes.
Yep, got it, sorry. Thank you.
You'll have fun, Sean.
Seat four. Darren White, please give your introduction.
Yeah, my name is Darren White. I am married to Katie. We have two sons, Landon and Layton, both currently enrolled in the district. I work locally as a journeyman lineman for Amhern, Illinois, where I'm represented by IBW Local Fifty-One. I was brought to the Westville area at three days old after being adopted by Bob and Jackie White. I grew up in Grecreak. I played ball on the field at Zambaletti Park, and I'm proud to say that I graduated from Westville High School. Here's my time spent here that played a big role in our decision to plant our roots here, to build our home here. It's why our kids go to school here. So, parents of school-aged children are currently underrepresented on the board. And I plan to be actively involved and plan to advocate for all students, as well as be a voice for their parents if elected. Now, some strengths I've earned on the board are a strong work ethic, a willingness to learn, and the ability to work well with others. And from my time spent on the executive board of my local union, I understand that that last strength is critical. Because teamwork and collaboration are essential to an efficient, effective board. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So with the last seat, Michael Acourt, please give your introduction.
My name is Michael Acourt. I've been on the board since 2012. Done a lot of positive things at this school. I've been born and raised here, I guess, at this school district. I went through this school, graduated through this school. I've seen the ugly when I was in school. Sean can probably definitely say that. But I know that the ugly's gone, and we don't want it to be any...we don't want it to come back. And as a board, we've kept that discipline the way that we should have it as all, so the teachers don't have to deal with it. Even the parents, we don't want the parents to have to deal with the issues that they have. As far as motivation to run, I have no direct connection with anybody on the school district at all. None whatsoever. I have no employees, I have no staff. I'm just me. I date Ashley English. She has a daughter that's thirteen years old. She's at the junior high. They went...Ashley graduated from here as well. I don't...as a board member, I don't...as in, I... As a board member, I want the school to be perfect. And that's how I want it to be ran. I've tried to do that at my job. I'm the superintendent for the housing in Vermaen County. And I also take care of the procurement contracts, so I do know a lot about the contracts that we do here in the schools. I know how the government money is. But I definitely...I feel like I'm a very good board member. I definitely care about what people say and talk. I've talked to people about it. There is issues, and I want to make sure they're good. And I want this school to be perfect. That's the way I run things.
Thank you. So now that everybody has introduced themselves, we will now start with the questions, starting with seat one. You'll draw a different question for each person, and you'll have three minutes to answer the questions.
Question eleven.
So Sean, your question is, how might you open the communication better between the school board and the school employees?
So I'd like to begin by saying I think we do have a good partnership with the faculty, staff, and the WEA, and we appreciate that partnership. I think as a board member, I've tried to foster open communications at a time when we still...and still respect the chain of command. By listening to concerns when appropriate and recommending to school employees and redirecting the people involved, maybe a conflict or a concern, back to the point of lowest chain of command for that, be it the administrator or then the superintendent, whatever it can be before it gets to the board. As a matter of fact, I did that last week. Somebody called me, a staff member called me and had an issue. I tried to listen and tried to be open to them, but at the same time, direct them back to the...so that they could get that problem solved. As a board member, I want them to listen. I want to make it clear that I respect the chain of command and that the board as a collection is the only authority that we have. They're the only authority to make decisions. I can't...it's a little bit inappropriate for me to try to be a go-between, but it's real appropriate for me to try and send people back to the source and get things solved that way. It's important that we have opportunities to hear from our employees through surveys, through the board meetings that they attend, special occasions. We do the recognition banquet, we do the meets and greets. We get updates from Labor Management all the time. Dr. Miller is very good to give us those. And I think that will help with communications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question six.
So Michael, your question is, what do you think class size limits should be and what can be done to help in keeping these limits?
Well, first off, I don't know if we can have a perfect number, a hard number that you can give anybody for this question, I guess. You know, the old saying, one size fits all, I don't believe in. I think that class size is something that is important to keep in mind when, you know, you're staffing the school district. And there's several considerations that you have to consider. You know, you have student-to-staff ratios, age of the students, the learning ability of the students, the curriculum, the instructions being delivered. So I definitely don't think that the one size fits all. I don't think we can give anybody a hard number and say, we're only gonna have sixteen kids in a class. You know, I do believe that, you know, we have PE classes that maybe have thirty, thirty-five. It's a little easier with two teachers in. But definitely, you know, like I keep saying, as I mean, approach to a class size is probably not the best approach for any school. In our role as a board member, we seek and serve in the staff and students the best we can be in the resource in our means. And that's really all I can say, because I don't think that you, we all, can say, we're only gonna have twenty kids in your class. I think that we will make sure that you're staffed correctly and do as good as we can to make sure that the students get the proper teaching.
Thank you.
Question four.
So Darren, your question is, what are some plans that you would like to see in the place for the next year?
Well, I know it's strange times with COVID. Your kids have really seen some setbacks, I know my own. Mine chose to be remote most of the year. I know the school board and the administration did the best they could with their abilities and their knowledge at the time. But for next year, I would really like to see a better curriculum for our students. In the event, we have in-person, remote learning next school year, I think we need to develop a better platform that promotes higher-level thinking. We need something that applies to all learners throughout the district. I know that's really hard to do, I don't know the answer for that. But I do see my own children falling behind, as well as other students I know. And, you know, in the high school, I hope we could see some...if we do have to use an Edgenuity-style platform, see some more courses and content that's closer to the content that's been previously offered, maybe like in electives. And I would also like to see our current facilities being properly maintained and kept up. If we haven't put some safety measures in place due to COVID, you know, even in the bathrooms, or do we have some technology in there with self-looshing toilets, automatic soap dispensers, and sinks, and hand dryers? You know, are we doing the things to really keep our kids safe if these measures are still in place next year? Those are the things I would like to see.
Thank you.
Question nine.
Leanne, your question, what will you do to learn more about the needs of the school employees?
Thank you. As Sean said earlier, I think we have a good rapport with our staff, and we're thankful for that. And I believe it is important as a board member to be aware of employees' needs, as always. And as a district, we do do several things to evaluate the needs. We do surveys a couple of times a year to our staff to see what they have...what they see that they need, what they see is working, what they see needs improvement. And we also receive anonymous information beginning of the year on things that they think that we can improve, that we don't know who's saying that these things need improved, but it gives us an idea of what the staff is looking at. We will work as a board member to address all of the issues, whether they're anonymous or stated by who said them, just to make sure that we're addressing any and all needs of our employees. And it's challenging, it's a challenging time right now. But we do survey, and we will keep that in mind as to make sure that we're addressing all those needs that are necessary.
Thank you.
Question nineteen.
Sean, what are your thoughts on staffing being pulled from their regular duties to act as substitutes? And what are your suggestions to resolve the ongoing occurrence?
Well, staffing, of course, is a managerial responsibility over building administrators, but of course, they report to us. So the school board level, we are aware of the challenges, and I think most of those challenges at this present time are as a result of COVID and a teacher shortage. It's been heightened by the pandemic, of course. And we've created issues with staffing that we need to seek to meet the needs of students. Here's what we've done, steps we have taken. We've increased pay for retired teachers. We've increased pay for retired long-term subs, rather. We've hosted Substitute Teachers Fair. We've hired more staff mid-year this time than we ever have. As a matter of fact, it's kind of exciting that we're able to hire people to fill in this year that really, we're getting these hires done before a lot of people have an opportunity to go to...for other districts to snatch those people up. We hire more mid-year in advance than we normally do, and we've even hired people that will help with that. And we see the vaccinations come onboard. One of the things that we've done too with the vaccinations is we've made that available to our substitutes, so we can get those more substitutes in. We realize it's a problem, it's a problem created by shortages of teachers. The COVID has exasperated that. You know, where do most of your substitute teachers come from? They're retired teachers, and they're not all sure they want to... And it's the older people that are affected more by the COVID so far. So we're really trying to address that, and we've got several measures in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question eighteen.
Michael, a lot of money is being spent towards the athletic programs. What priorities would you place on much-needed building repairs, updating textbooks, and providing classroom materials?
Well, the district, we're doing the capital funds projects because the way that the COVID has started this has gave us a great opportunity to be able to do our our long-range facilities that we're trying to get done. And I think this is the best time. As a board, we agreed that this was definitely the best time to do this. Because of the COVID, we didn't have a lot going on. But we have spent a lot of money on the educational side of it too, academically. We paid for all of DAC. The high school kids are able to go to DAC for free. We're the only school in the district that does that in the whole county, I do believe. So you can...your kids can go to school for free and get their education. That way, we chose to do that as a board. You know, we spent money on all the new roofs, the boilers. Most of the schools, all the boilers are repaired, except for the one in the high school, and that's gonna be in our long-term planning that we're doing right now. And I hope that I'm able to see all that going, because I do believe that we've been doing a lot for the facilities. And the...you know, you're asked, what will I do for textbooks, for writing materials? I do believe that as a school, I think we have, and I think we bought books in the last four or five years. I think we're working on our English books now, or our math books. So, yeah, there's a lot of process there, but I definitely think that doing the facilities is a big thing. People want to come to Westville. You know, you see something nice, and, you know, I think that the school itself, textbooks, all that is being done. So I don't think, you know, people say that they're not, but they are being done, so.
Thank you.
Question seven.
Darren, describe your policy or thoughts on student discipline.
Well, I'm a proponent of discipline. A well-managed classroom is more prone to student success because there'll be less distraction. But discipline is something that's taught. Something that needs to be learned. It should be age-appropriate and not done in a provoking manner that would make the student want to act out more. I believe expectations should be set, and there should be acknowledgement that those expectations are understood. If they're not met, the student should be held accountable, and there should be consequences. That's all.
Thank you.
Question three.
Leanne, what do you see as the most pressing problems within our district?
Well, right now, I see the question issue as how to move on from this pandemic. How do we get our students back into the schools for in-person learning? How do we get those students that have the learning gaps back into the in-person learning persona? How do we get them to catch up to what they've lost by not working, by learning from home? The social and emotional issues of those kids not having contact with friends, the emotional issues of not being able to come to school, not being able to study the way they used to study, not being able to participate in extracurricular activities. It all weighs heavily on our students. Teachers, they have the most stressful year probably of their career, just last year. So we need to adjust...they had to adjust to electronic technologies. They had to adjust their teaching, their work life, their home life with their students at home, their family life. Our school district did maintain the highest level of in-person learning in the county, but not...but they still have those at-home kids that did suffer from the learning gaps, the social and emotional issues. We, as a school district, need to get our students back to school. And that's gonna be our most pressing problem, is to get them back in school as safe environment where they can come and they can learn the way that they know how to learn.
Thank you. Did we do three last questions?
Go ahead, we're good. Alright, we're good time.
Question sixteen.
Sean, if you had unlimited money to spend on our school district, what two things would you do and why?
Okay. Well, that's an exciting question. I think theoretically, you'd have to work with the other stakeholders, your community, your staff, and the other board members. But if you're gonna ask me personally what I would do if we had unlimited money, I think I'd carry out some of the initiatives that we have already in place for our long-range facility plan. I would like to see our pre-K efforts expanded. I'd like to see our building added onto. I'd like to see our greater access to pre-kindergarten services, expanding our facility and program to meet more of our vulnerable students before they get to kindergarten and establish stronger social and academic background. As a matter of fact, me personally, I'd like to see us have daycare for our student mothers that we have and staff. I think that would be a great thing to have if we had unlimited money. The second thing I'd like to do is, if we had unlimited money, is put money in our staff, put money in our salaries, so that the districts of Bamville and Champaign and Urbana had to worry about us taking teachers away from them. But realistically, if we had more money, I'd want to do more fine arts too. I'd like to see us put...and that's a long-term goal that we've talked about, but expanding our fine arts auditorium and incorporating, you know, what do we call it, multimedia studies along with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question ten. Michael, what will you do to learn more about the needs of our students?
Well, first off, I know that we do a lot of data. We send out a lot of surveys for kids, and we talk to them a lot. We look at it. So I would have to say, one of the best ways that we try to gauge district needs is by surveying our faculty first, then our staff, then we survey our students, two or three times a year, I believe. We have reviewed the student performance indicators like the math testing, our local math, asset states, college express, dual enrollment opportunities, number of students graduating from the college credits. With associates is great. I mean, I think that's the greatest thing that we can do at this school, at this district right now for the high school level, is to be able to get the high school kids into the college. And excellent. college and excellent. And, you know, as a board member, you don't want to overstep your boundaries either in this question, I figured. And give the appearance that an individual board member, we have power to resolve all the issues that these students have. We need to be able to work with all of us and then the community and the parents and as the staff and the students and try to figure out through all these surveys that we've been given and get the right things for them. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't like to overstep and say, hey, I can fix it all, but I definitely want to keep everything in, I guess, in the forum of board, you know? You can't answer one question that a student may have here, but then we need to figure this out. And that's kind of why Seth and the board itself send out all these surveys, because we want to find out what's going on with it.
Thank you. Question fifteen.
Karen, what is the value of talking one-on-one with teachers concerning issues?
Well, I feel the value of talking one-on-one with anybody is that I feel people tend to be more honest in a one-on-one conversation about their feelings on certain issues. They tend to be less guarded when they're not in front of a panel that they may feel is judging them on their specific opinions or their feelings. And I think talking one-on-one with somebody just allows for less distractions so you can stay focused on the issue at hand. That's all.
Thank you. Question seventeen.
Leanne, do you review the Illinois Report Card? And if you do, what is your opinion of the usefulness and information that this report reveals?
Yes, I do review that. As a board, we do review that every year. And as probably everyone that reads it, we do believe that there is a lot of room for improvement on this report card. However, I also feel that there's so much more to a student than one test to score on one, on one given day. I have two children that are terrible test takers, so their scores on these tests would not be revealed how, how good of students that they are. At the school, we provide many services that do not show up on these reports that provide, that show our students are great students. We have several students now that will receive their associate's degree on the same weekend they see, they receive their high school diploma from, they get their associate's degree at that because we provide that service for them. We provide means to some, we provide meals to some students that may go without meals because they can't afford it or they just otherwise don't have access to that and keeps their tummy full, that makes them great students. We serve students who may be the first to graduate in their, in their family with the services with, that we provide. We provide extracurricular activities, extracurricular programs that include band, chorus, arts, sports, that provide scholarships to these students who may be able to go to college that are not able to go to this college without those extracurricular activity scholarships. So, my, my opinion is that one sole metric should not be used to define our district and our students.
Thank you. So, those were our three rounds of questions. So, you can please offer a closing statement, which could include an answer to any previously asked question. Please limit this statement to three minutes and we will draw seats randomly.
Seat three.
Darren.
Well, I'd just like to thank the WEA for inviting me here tonight to properly address the community. I'm very excited for the potential to serve in this capacity. Parents, if I could leave you with one thought, if I am elected, though I'll just be one of seven, I want you to know that when a board is discussing transitioning in the next year or changes in policy or curriculum or extracurricular activities, I'll be there as an active and engaged parent, able to ask questions and provide valuable input and how those decisions will affect not only my children, but also your children. And to the dedicated faculty and staff, as a parent and an active and engaged union member, I want you to know that I have your best interest at heart. I want to know that we are creating a culture and environment in these schools that keeps you wanting to stay at Westville and continue doing your best. I advocate for the best resources, training and work environment that this district can provide, so you can continue to successfully educate our children and preparing them for the future. Thank you for all that you do. I just want to say, overall, Westville's have been great to me, and I feel like this is one of the best ways I can give back to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seat four.
Leanne, many things were discussed here today, and I hope that we answer them openly and as honestly as possible. Just to recap on some of the things that I've been involved with as I've been on the school board and help our school district, because I've been involved in decreasing our tax rate, increased fund balances, we gain financial strength so that we're able to do our long-term facility trainings, decrease in health insurance costs for our facility and staff. Our facilities, the WK's parking lot, Tacoma Road, the high school road, the Dena High Road. New gym floors, no cost or, no, no change in our ratings, no, no cause, no increase in taxes, those are all paid for. Technology replacement when necessary. We also provided all-new laptops and iPads for all of our students in basketball this year in place of, in place for the pandemic. We provided safety improvements to our buildings, new fog systems, new lighting, new door numbers to help alleviate, to help identify any problems for emergency personnel if they need to come to a building. Training, training for our safety, air conditioning in the high school gym. Our labor relations, five-year contract, remain regionally competitive, partnering with the WA to help employ, to keep our employees all active during COVID and laying run off and help keep our kids in school when requested. As a board member and current president of the school board, I remain committed to maintaining strong standards, to have the best schools in the county, and I would like to finish what I started in the district.
Thank you. Seat one.
Sean.
Is it mine? I can hear you.
Yeah, it's her turn to give her closing statement.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. I'm really not going to add much to what Seth said, to be honest with you, but I touched on it briefly in my opening statement. But in my career, I'm from the postal service. As a matter of fact, I was retired, I'm retired from the postal service. I was a postmaster in Westville for about five years before I retired. And one of the things that I always practiced when I interviewed people and when I put good people in places was, that the best thing I could do was look at past performance if I wanted to predict future outcomes. And Leanne just listed a myriad of things, and we've all done it here, that the board has worked hard on. We've worked together, we're very cohesive. And I would encourage you that as you decide what you want to do for a vote, that you look at past performance to predict future outcomes. I think that will serve the district well. Having said that, I appreciate the WEA, I appreciate you guys hosting this. Appreciate you letting me zoom in on this COVID restriction, which is not fun, but go get a new knee in Wednesday and I'll be out again dancing around Thursday. But I appreciate that. I will keep serving Westville and appreciate your role. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Michael.
All right, same thing. I mean, going over what Sean and Leanne both said, we've done a lot. Been here since twelve. Kind of go back to what's earlier on the question to talk about. I've been so active in the school itself. I've been coaching since 1999 here with Guy Gilof. He's been a great mentor for me. And I feel like he's got a lot of knowledge and it's been wonderful. I think that he loves his school just as much as anybody. Everybody wants to be a Tiger, I feel like, so. I'm here as a board member for the whole, the whole district, the employees and the kids. I want to make sure that it's fair to everyone and they get the right education that they deserve.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming and participating, and it was nice as a student to hear like the behind-the-scenes kind of of what was going on. So, thank you all for coming and letting us moderate this.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.